To the regular public meeting of the Henry County Board of Commissioners for 9:00 AM, Monday, May 16th, 2011. At this time, I would like to call the meeting to order. And also, I would ask that we amend the agenda this morning. The minutes are set to be approved today, and I would like to amend the agenda to move that item until tomorrow's meeting. And with that change, I would ask for an acceptance of the agenda.
Motion by Mr. Holder.
Second by Mr. Alletta. All in favor? Motion carries 5-0. The following items were advertised for this meeting and have been tabled by staff and will not be heard this morning. The Unified Land Development Code text amendment, ULDC-AM-11-05, and ordinance by Henry County, Georgia, to amend Chapter 12, Sections 12.04.00 and 12.04.03, appeal of zoning advisory board or administrative actions as it pertains to the appeals process in accordance with Section 12.02.11 and 12.03.00 of the Henry County Unified Land Development Code. ULDC-AM-11-06, an ordinance by Henry County, Georgia, to amend Chapter 3, Section 3.04.02, 3.04.03, and 3.04.04, the watershed protection areas in accordance with Section 12.02.11 and 12.03.00 of the Henry County Unified Land Development Code. If you're here for those items, they have been tabled, and they will be re-advertised for a future meeting. At this time, we are going to have an update of the 2011 legislative session. Our presenter is going to be Representative Andy Welch. And at this time, we would just call them forward. And of course, we have Mr. Rufus Montgomery here. Brad Carver.
Madam Chair, if you'll oblige us, Representative Welch asked if we'd go ahead of him, so we're going to go ahead and run through that. We'll be as brief as possible, try to keep it right under 10 minutes. My name is Rufus Montgomery. I'm with the firm of Hall, Booth, Smith &amp; Schlover. My colleague Brad Carver has joined me this morning to update you on the happenings of the 2011 session of the Georgia General Assembly. We'll jump right in with the commission priorities as given to us in terms of what you've asked us to work on, starting with local legislation. As we had success last year, we also moved on into some local legislation this year. Come on. A little technical difficulties, hold on. The second issue was higher education appropriations with Southern Crescent Technical College. We try to standardize what we do each year. Five things, determine the priorities, things that are important to you, coming up with a strategy, communicating those issues to legislators and the appropriate personnel in Atlanta, and then guiding the tactics to get it done. And then finally, what we're doing today, and what we'll continue to do, is to measure the progress on that to ensure that we're giving you an adequate return on investment. The 2011 legislative session, 40 legislative days by Georgia Constitution. It ran 95 calendar days this year, from January 10th to April 14th. We'll note that the state budget's $3 billion less than it was three years ago, so it's still a huge budget crunch. Although you've asked us to pursue appropriations, we continue to do that, primarily in the bond area. This was the first session for a new governor. I'd have to publicly applaud the governor in that it's a change from the previous administration that he does comment on existing legislation. You can't go talk to him about things before they happen, whereas in the previous administration, you had to sort of guess and hope that everything would be okay in the end. And it's not that way with this new governor. Also, that is a non-election year, so some of the more controversial bills tend to come up in the non-election years. The delegation changed by three members. The delegation elected Senator Emmanuel Jones as its chairman. On the House side, Representative Andy Welch joined the delegation. On the Senate side, Senator Gail Davenport regained her slot as a senator, primarily from Clayton County but representing Henry County. And Senator Rick Jeffries, obviously a former member of this body, has done very well and has received compliments, just in terms of how he represents Henry, how he represents himself and his community with regard to what he's done. Since we've been on board, the agreement we've kind of worked through with the delegation is that there be unanimous resolutions from this board going forward. You, as a board, gave us those resolutions this year, and we took copies of those and the language that you wanted and got them to each member of the delegation. Jump right into the first bill, making nonpartisan elections for a probate court judge. All nine members of the delegation approved the county's request. No problems on the local calendar. If you'll note that the Senate, the bills this year originated in the Senate because Senator Jones carried the bills. There were no issues or problems getting those bills run through with Senator Jones. It went to the House, got signed, back to the Senate. They sent it to the governor, and two days he signed the bill. It became law April 20th. The second Senate Bill 201 was the combination of two unanimous resolutions that you sent us. The two requests were to allow for three and three, that you're familiar, whereas before we had four running in one election year and then two running in the next. This just balances it out. And thank you to the District III Commissioner for accommodating the request to kind of make that happen without an issue. That was one of the questions from the delegation. The second one was to allow qualified successor to take office upon certification of the results, as we know would happen before. Again, that cleared up some of the problem or issue there, and going forward, you'll be fine. All members of the delegation signed off on that, no problem on the local level. And this bill was signed by the governor on April 20th. It's also law. Technically, the fourth, given that there were four requests. This one for the Henry County Governmental Services Authority, expanding the purpose to include airports. And it's along the lines of what we always say, the county asserts its right to do what it deems necessary to provide the service that you're, we're elected to provide for its citizens. This allows, this clarifies some of the deals with the powers of the authority. And again, this had no problem on the local level, on the local calendar, and it was signed into law on April 20th. Appropriations, again, on a slim budget year. This was the number one priority, as identified by you as a board, and more specifically as the chairman's priority. I'll take a moment to applaud, there were a number of individuals that worked to get this done, in addition to the support that was received from the board. The chamber got involved. But there was a man among men in the delegation, I have to just give him credit for what he did. Everywhere I went, he was already there. That was Representative Andy Welch. I mean, he was, he pretended that he knew nothing about the process and just knocked down all doors along the way. And he kind of did it in his own way, and he deserves a lion's share of the credit for getting that done. But the local folks were very supportive with this and coming up to meet with members of the General Assembly. And it's just, I just see it as a team effort. But that was, bond deal was approved, $5.465 million. You'll see a listing and what we'll provide in the summary for a classroom building, but this money is directly for the Southern Crescent Technical College here in Henry County. In a briefly run through, some selected legislative ventures. What we did this year, the number one priority was the Technical College. And so, we tried to stay away from anything that would get us tied into something that's controversial, where somebody could then turn around and maybe use that against us or say that Henry was getting involved here or there. So we're very selective about, unless you contacted us, unless we were asked our opinion, did not dwell into all the issues. So again, on a briefly run through, Sunday package sales, new governor, did not have a problem with it. It's already been signed by the governor, effective July 1st, allowing for the sales of beer, wine, and distilled spirits on Sunday. And this is in places that already have package sales. There was an ethics bill that was passed last year that kind of went a little bit too far in a couple of areas. This bill was signed and made retroactive back to January 10th. It would have snagged about 80,000 people to make them all listed as lobbyists. It also would have required that every, any staff person that had a single conversation with a legislator would have been considered, would have had to register as a lobbyist, and it just went a little bit too far. So they fixed that. House Bill 92, let me go back here, reduces early voting period, just puts Georgia in line with most states. The national average is 24 days on the early voting period. This brings it to 21 days. Puts everyone in line, the city, the county, state, federal, everybody's 21 days. It does require that the second Saturday before an election, that the polls be open for that day. We did provide input as to how that could potentially affect the county by having less days. It was somewhere along the lines of $100,000 in savings when you start taking away additional personnel. And so, that was a good thing from a financial perspective. House Bill 302 was actually requested by the Secretary of State. He said it would help with the logistics of voting for military personnel, but it just simply moves back the primary date for 2012, also noting that the regional sales tax referendum will be held on that same date. Senator Jeffries got a bill passed with regard to solid waste management, Senate Bill 157, the reporting and plan updates. What they sought to do with 157 and with Senate Bill 86, where, and the governor's already signed 157, were to remove, you know, duplicative and sort of wasteful reports, requiring the counties to do things over and over. And one of the things I can continue to say about Henry, and not just to brag, but it's true, is that you have your stuff together. When you have your stuff together, you should not be pulled into problems that other legislators have with their counties. And again, that's not been an issue here. So both of these bills, just look at streamlining the process. And we believe that the, there was a compromise worked out on Senate Bill 86. We believe the governor's also going to sign that bill as well.
Just to answer the question about the solid waste management reporting bill.
Yes, ma'am.
Did they also include, because at one point in there, there was a rider or a tag put on there that pertained to DRI reports or DRI, the DRI process. Do you know if that stayed in there? Because as of this bill, if Henry County had a development of regional significance, it had to go through the ARC process for their approval. And someone had asked that that language be included in there, where the DRI process, you would notify adjoining jurisdictions, but it did not require approval from the ARC. Do you know if that stayed in the bill or not?
I don't want to misspeak. Given that it was Senator Jeffries' bill, I kind of made sure that I stayed away from the workings of the bill in terms of how he pressed it through, but I'll get you clarification on that question.
Okay, thank you.
Last year, as you recall, there were some fees. It was a big controversy in terms of how some fees were raised. One of them was a $10 per page fee. House Bill 41, with Superior Court clerks in preparing trial records. This reduced it from $10 per page back to $1 per page. There are some other provisions, and we'll provide a summary with that as well. House Bill 240, when there's an infeasible splotch project, it just allows you to determine if the project has become infeasible or impractical, something that's not good for the citizens, and it allows you to take that money and then to put it back into tax reduction in your county. House Bill 179, what they call the billboard bill. You have to get a, this allows billboard owners, they're required to get a permit now from the Department of Transportation. This, again, allows them to remove and to maintain trees and vegetation in front of their properties. It does protect historical trees and landmarks and what have you. If the billboard is higher than 75 feet, in order to get a permit to clear it, they're going to have to lower it to 75 feet. There are a couple other deals there. This was a heavily lobbied bill, and it was passed by the folks who were obviously in support of allowing that to take place. It does, it is effective July 1st, and it has been signed by the governor. House Bill 197, the sheriff had talked to me about limiting the charges for the emergency care detainees to Medicaid rates. I would note that if a contract is in place by July 1st, then that would supersede the law. But if not, then the maximum that could be charged would be the Medicaid rate to pay for emergency health care for detainees. Moving forward, special session on reapportionment begins August 15th, understanding that generally it's for reapportionment, but the governor can add anything he deems necessary to the agenda. So there's potential for tax reform there, but we're closely monitoring that to see where it goes. But that starts on August 15th. Our priorities going forward, obviously, are the approval of the 2012 budget. And just noting that it was in the agency request, the governor's request, made it through the House, made it through the Senate, made it through conference. We feel real confident about that money staying there for Southern Crescent Technical College. Another thing that tends to be a recurring theme is communication and coordination with GDOT. As y'all know, we've had some success lately with regard to bond projects from GDOT. And there are things that, as far as agencies go, in this, in these slim budget times, GDOT seems to be a place where we can continue to advance with regard to appropriations and projects. And then finally, the priorities that you present before us as a board. So that concludes what I have to share, and I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Does anyone have a question? Mr. Alletta?
Andy might be there to answer this, but there's been a lot of talk about House Bill 186. Is there anything on that? Do you know anything about that? I think it's 186.
Excuse me?
I think it's 186 regarding schools funding.
Regarding?
Schools.
Oh, QBE? I'm not, I'll let Representative Welch speak to that bill. I need to, 186 just doesn't come up on the radar. I do know they're looking at the QBE formula. It has been, there are two things that folks in my profession make sure that we don't do. We make sure that we serve those who hire us, and we make sure that we don't offend those who make the decisions. And you won't find many folks who will comment on the QBE process. It is a conversation that can take place online, because the leadership, and it's really emanating from the House. It's going to be led on the House side with regard to QBE, but they are going to make some changes, some serious changes to that formula. One of the big areas is going to be in how the technology is funded. On the House and Senate side, they're both looking at how they can be more efficient, you know, getting rid of textbooks, those types of things, and bringing Georgia's kids from the bottom 40th in these rankings and trying to move them forward. But QBE will be addressed, and I believe will be addressed next year.
I know it has to do with the funding for the schools and technical side, the dual enrollment process in the mall attendance, is what I understood.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'd also like to comment, you said, made a statement about the ongoing communication with GDOT, and that's been very instrumental for Henry County. And I know the county attorney can verify this, is, we were going through the issue of the land swap in order to try to attract Phillips Van Huesen to Henry County, and that was a critical piece of that, of that agreement, that we had to bring that new industry here. I know you spent a lot of time on the phone with us and with GDOT, trying to make sure that that happened so that we could bring that industry in and bring some jobs to our citizens. So that, that has been very, very important, and that's just one aspect. Of course, the I-75 corridor, we've had ongoing conversations, the Jodico Road Bridge and other things like that. And, you know, it's good to have someone there that can pick up the phone and have those relationships in place to make sure that we keep Henry County's priority at the forefront in some of these agencies. And I know it's been very helpful to have that.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Anybody else with a question, comment? All right, we appreciate the presentation, and I guess at this time, we'll be hearing from Representative Andy Welch.
Good morning, members of the board. It's a pleasure to be here this morning. I'd like to spend most of the time trying to answer your questions, if you have them. But a few introductory comments. The, about 2008, so we're looking at about four, three years ago, we were looking at a budget that, in that budget, had funding for our technical school, $8.4 million. That budget process led from the governor's office all the way through the General Assembly to the final day, the 40th day of legislative session, with the money being intact for the technical school. At the last day in conference committee, the money was taken out from Henry County and moved to Calhedi County. We retained about $400,000 for design. Rest of it's gone to Calhedi County. Four weeks ago, Calhedi County opened that school and welcomed new technical students into the school. And in this time, in this recession, we should have been opening that school here in Henry County to help our citizens retool for a depressed economy. We missed that opportunity. I'm proud to be before you this morning to say that we didn't miss it the second time. We might have gotten a strike on that first go-round, but we hit a home run this time. Now, we hit the home run with a team, and that team consisted of Rufus Montgomery, it consisted of every one of you on this board, passing unanimous resolutions in support of the technical school. It consisted of every city in Henry County doing likewise. It consisted of the Development Authority, the Chamber of Commerce. It consisted of other organizations that I will fail to mention this morning, all teaming together, both locally and at the state level, to ensure that this level of support that we had, essentially unanimous approval through every authority at this level of government, was heard at the state level. And because of all the work that every individual did, we were successful. But it took the whole team to get us there. And so I want to extend my gratitude to every citizen of Henry County who supported this effort, to every leader of this county who led on this issue, and to every member that put any kind of time towards this endeavor. This was a great success for Henry County in a time when we need it, when we desperately need to be able to provide that level of education locally, reducing the travel time for individuals who are already on a very thin budget at home, not spending $4 a gallon of gas to drive to Griffin to go to school when they can be right here in Henry County. This is important, and I applaud everyone's effort in that respect. As another part of that budget, our budget, I like to ask the question, would any of you want to invest in governmental bonds from the state of California, from the state of Indiana? I don't think I'd have any takers. Georgia is in the top eight of 888 bond ratings out of all states in this union. So if you want to put money in a government that understands how to cut spending, how to minimize waste, and how to make sure they get a high return on the tax dollars, it's our state. In this session, we cut again 5% from last year. $2 billion had to be cut because we lost federal dollars that had been previously put into the system. That money was cut out. We still had to cut back to achieve a balanced budget that we're required to maintain by the Constitution of our state. We did that, and we cut essentially 5% across the board in almost every agency. Some agencies were cut a little less, some agencies were cut a little bit more. But in general, we cut back 5% across the board. This is significant, because even though our revenues are going up, and we saw that slow 2% tick upwards in tax revenues, sales taxes coming in, slow but very steady revenues going up for the state. Well, that's fine and good. But until those revenues are sustainable, there shouldn't be any dismissing of the course that this particular General Assembly has taken, and that is to cut the waste and move forward with a balanced budget and move forward in a responsible manner, because that's what has to happen now in these budget times. Now, it's still tough, and people, jobs are lost as a result of that. But those are the decisions that we had to make, and we, and I felt very strong about the decisions we made. I think we made the right decision in that respect. You also notice that we also preserved probably one of our biggest economics stimulant packages, which is Hope Scholarship. There's no other state in this country where you can go and get the tax-based subsidy, it's actually lottery-based subsidy, to go to school, pay for your college or technical school tuition, even subsidizing private schools. So it's fair across the board. And trying to save Hope was the number one agenda item, I think, for our leadership, aside from the budget. And we were able to do that. It's been criticized, of course, but it's a difficult decision to make. But the most important thing was to take away or decouple the Hope lottery funds from the tuition increases that were associated with colleges and universities in the public school system. So as the tuition, as the rates of the revenue increased from lottery proceeds, so did tuition. And the graph has a distinct parallel. So every time lottery results came back, and they would be higher, and the tuitions would go up. And it was important to take that and break that coupling, so that it was a cap on the basis of what we would bring in from our lottery revenues that would determine what we could spend out, not tuition. I mean, if you think about it, you don't want the price tag of a gallon of milk determining how you're going to govern your budget. You have to look at it from your income at home. How much money do you bring in will determine how much of that milk you can buy. And we need to do the same thing with Hope, and we did. So we're very happy about that, because that keeps that scholarship in place. 90% of tuition will be paid out, and literally tens of thousands of Georgians that are moving into college, even going into technical careers, they will have that, they'll have the financial advantage that many kids throughout the states don't have. And that is to be able to go to school, basically with very little cost coming out of pocket for them, if they have achieved the merit base that we have set in the statute, 3.0 GPA or 3.7 for a full ride. So I'm pleased to have those two big items passed. I think those make our state very attractive for businesses looking to move into our state. It's also attractive for those executives who have kids looking to go into the schools, into our university system, to retain those businesses here in the state of Georgia. We have a number of other things that we've passed that I think are extremely important. We took care of, I think, an important topic of illegal immigration. That was House Bill 87. State of Georgia, and it was just, again, AJC this weekend, has, according to the Pew Research Center, 425,000 illegal immigrants within our state. It was important that we take some steps to regulate what is happening on terms of the reason why they're coming. And that is, there are jobs that are being utilized, employers that are utilizing this labor. This new bill will put a cap on that, will require that anyone that has 10 employees or more will have to e-verify, register with the e-Verify system at the federal level and check every employee out. Now, is this great for business? Honestly, it's going to be a cumbersome process, and it's more red tape for business. But is this a national problem that we have to deal with because our federal government is not dealing with it? Yes. And so we've taken that step with this new law. I feel confident in the law's language as compared to the state of Arizona's language. This is a long deliberative process that started back in the early fall, worked its way through December, January, February, and on through the process, very public in terms of the number of hearings. Many, many revisions to the bill over the course of time to reflect the concerns that people had about the bill, and also to make sure that the bill, we believe, will be upheld at a constitutional level, at the federal level. So this was a positive step, I think, in affirming state, our state rights and moving forward with a policy that frankly, our federal government has to tackle and needs to tackle in the coming years as promptly as possible. We also passed some important legislation that dealt with trafficking of youngsters for sex trafficking. This was, Atlanta's become unfortunately a hotbed for this particular deplorable business that has emerged. And so we have taken steps to strengthen those laws in the state of Georgia, to make human trafficking, not only was it illegal, but to clarify the illegality of it and to increase the penalties associated with it. We also tackled some other big issues, I think that are important. The last one that I'll mention for right now, in terms of local governments, was House Bill 122, and this dealt with private, public and private partnerships for reservoirs and any other water-related facilities. This could be well programs, this could be facility programs. This was an important step to modernize and update our system so that we can make it a little more competitive and hopefully have a better chance, a better chance at improving the water infrastructure for metro Atlanta and the rest of the state. Now... Now, as for Henry County, we don't have that problem. We have enough water to service the growing population anticipated to 2030 easily. Our four planning here in our county, in our community, puts us at a competitive advantage over many of the other metropolitan counties, and it's one that needs to be underscored. This is an advantage that makes us far more attractive for manufacturing industry and for employers to bring their businesses here because there is a good water supply. This will also help with our growth, residential growth, and I think further an improved tax base over time. It will position Henry County for being a leader in the next growth spurt that may occur, hopefully in this coming year and in the years to come. If you will, I'd be happy to take questions because I think those are important, and then I'll just have a few summary comments to make at the end.
I wanted to see if you could comment a little more about the deepening of the Savannah port. A lot of people probably don't realize how much Henry County's economy is tied to the ports in Savannah. I know that the money that was requested from Washington did not come in the amount that was really needed for this project, but it is critical to the economy for the state of Georgia. And how are y'all going to address continuing moving that project forward? It's a very expensive project.
Yes, ma'am. This is an extremely important point for Henry County and for the state, but I think for Henry County, so one needs to be underscored. The deepening of Savannah Harbor, as you probably have read in the newspapers, is an important economic generator for us moving forward. The Pan America ships that'll be coming across, that once the canal is open, the Panama Canal has been completed in terms of its widening of locks and its dredging out, that should be done by 2014. When that is done, the largest of the container ships that transport containers throughout the world will be able to come through the Panama Canal. And right now, I think there are three ports on the Atlantic coast, Miami, New Jersey, and I think the other one is in New York, are able, they're deep enough to allow for these ships to move into their harbors. Ours is about six to eight feet shy of being deep enough to accept those ships. These ships are going to bring in the largest quantities of container goods, and the object of, part of the object of our budget this year was to secure 30, over $30 million in funding for the deepening of Savannah Harbor. That was done, but we do not have the federal matching funds to go with it. So we're going to have to look at as a legislature, we're going to have to look at it from the perspective of the next session, what are we going to do to try and secure the remainder funds? And I believe it was an equal matching fund that was going to occur. So we have a large gap to make up to get the total sum to deepen that harbor. Now, deepening the harbor means that there are going to be far more containers that are offloaded in Savannah, and we would have a competitive advantage over Miami because we'd be closer into the mainland to get those crates in, those containers in. This is extremely important for the jobs around Savannah, but as you well know, we have a strong logistics industry here in Henry County. That will only grow with the deepening of the harbor. And we've also lost a number of logistic businesses over the last few years, rents and leases that have expired and people have moved out. We have buildings that remain unoccupied in our business warehouse areas. We need to try to load those buildings back up with goods, but most importantly, put people back to work in those facilities. So that's very important, and we're going to have to figure out how to do that as a state because evidently we're not going to get the support that we need from the federal government, at least not as of right now. We'll be looking at that again. In fact, I was just talking to the appropriations chairman this weekend about that particular issue, and we'll be looking at it again hard in the next session.
Thank you. Anyone else have a question or comment? Mr. Holder?
Just to come in, Andy, I want to thank you for coming and making this presentation. It means a lot. You were also here prior to the session, seeking input from the board. That's what it's all about, and it comes back to communication, and you touched on that, and communication is so important that we communicate from the local level to the state, to the feds. Without it, you don't survive. I want to pass one thing along, and Randy, this is a little history lesson. Losing the Technical College to Coweta, and they opened, as you said, and we're about to start. This is not a first for Henry County. And I want to tell you, I'll give you an example, the one-way pairs. Because the various jurisdictions that were involved in making the decision were not on the same page or did not agree, the one-way pairs that were slated for McDonough now in Fayetteville, Georgia, and you know how long they've been in Fayetteville. So simply because it was not a unified effort on behalf of the county, the city, the various organizations that were part of it, people are riding on one-way pairs in Fayetteville, Georgia, and McDonough's still waiting. So those are things that can happen. It has happened. History proves it's happened. So I just want to thank you for what you've done and for the entire delegation in making, communicating to us what is taking place. Thank you.
Mr. Letta, you had asked about House Bill 186. That bill will not do any adverse change to the current system of how we're portioning funds. Actually, we'll take that, the dual enrollment program, and let me back up, because we get to talking in House bill numbers, and I don't think people fully understand what those numbers are and what they mean. But House Bill 186 was one that was spearheaded by Representative Davis. This was a very proactive bill combining a lot of aspects of what our chamber had been working on, and I think what our Board of Education had been working on, and that is to provide students who are not interested in going to college with another means of becoming employable from the high school level. And so going from college preparatory emphasis and moving back, as it were, many years ago, where you could obtain skills at your high school level that you could translate into a job after you graduated, or translate into a technical school diploma, a technical college diploma, we lost track of that somewhere. And Representative Davis, Chamber, other entities of Board of Education, all worked to try and shift that around and put that emphasis back into our high school system. So 186 does that. It urges, I mean, it actually directs our state school superintendent, Mr. Barge, to go through and to design a career pathway program that is true, not just something on the books. A lot of times, you see state level, any level of government, will just put something on the books, adopt something, and it never gets funded, it never gets implemented, it never actually, that rubber never meets the road. In this case, this was a change. This law will actually require that system be set up, and your own Henry County high school system already does that right now. We have that program in place. It's an advanced studies program where we are training students in courses, in nursing and other courses, that are gearing them to be more adept to being successful in a technical school program than they would have been if they didn't have that system in place. This only furthers that policy that the Board of Education has taken on, and it makes it more state law. So it's extremely important. That program that we have in Henry County is also why we were in the Race to the Top program and why we were successful in getting some of those monies down. So that bill was extremely important. It does not change the funding based upon the students in the seats. So what we're not doing is we're not altering, sometimes you can lose money if you put kids into the technical program, so that bill will not work to change that. But there will come a day when you move kids into that technical school program or into the dual enrollment program, that it does work to undermine the revenues that we bring in at a school board level. It does undermine those revenues because you're pulling students out of the traditional high school seat and putting them into this dual program, which means some of the monies then start going to the institution Clayton State or to Southern Crescent, and you start losing some of that revenue that otherwise would go to the students. Well, you know, the money is important, but we all know how you spend the money is more important. And educating our kids to be productive members of our community and taxpayers of our community, I think, has to be a real strong goal in that policy decision-making, and that bill helps do that.
Mr. Letta?
I didn't want to get into a lot of details because it took me about a two-hour meeting to sit in to understand it and a lot of technical sides, but the bottom line is, I understood it, and correct me if I'm wrong, is that with Henry County or anybody who tries to promote dual enrollment, it does cut back the funding from the state because of the way they count credits and everything else. So this bill, as I understand it, is to correct that so that the schools don't get penalized for trying to advance dual enrollment, which is what everybody's trying to move toward. So that's why I asked the question.
That's correct. It does plug that hole, but I think that, and to be all candid, I think that there's a number, and I don't know the exact number, but I believe there's a number trigger. I think that you can get to a certain point where you've enrolled a certain number of students in the dual enrollment program, and then that switch will flip back to the old way, not the way the statute is protecting them. But I'm not 100% sure on that, but I think that's what my recollection is.
I know that's why I brought it up.
But I'm glad you brought up the bill. I think it was a very strong bill. It's a good one for our community, and Representative Davis should be applauded for his work on that bill. You asked about 157, Senate Bill 157, Madam Chair.
The DRI.
DRI. I don't recall, in what Senator Jeffries put together for that bill, that was not included. What he did include was no longer would ARC have a role in determining approval of your overall comp plan, your capital improvements plan, when it had anything to do with the solid waste management. So that removal process was eliminated. And the DRI, there was an amendment made, and I mean, this is how it goes. On the 40th day, Senator Jeffries' bill comes over from the Senate. Representative Allen Powell presents it on the floor. I actually speak in favor of the bill, and it passes our House, flying colors. Well, it then goes back because then an amendment is placed on it somewhere along the line, and in that process, a very lengthy amendment is placed to it. And actually, the bill is passed, but it's got to go back for the Senate because it had some changes. Another bill comes into play, and Senator Jeffries talks to me and says, "Look, we've got to get my bill back out. It needs to be attached to something that may die." And so we say, "Well, okay, fine. We're going to attach it to a separate bill." And that bill may have dealt with the DRI process. I don't know that it did or did not, but he worked with the governor's office to move his bill along. It was attached to Senate Bill 157. His had a different number. Ultimately, those bills were approved and signed by the governor, and so we're very pleased with that because what that does is that cuts down on the expenditures that you have to make as a local government in compliance with red tape that the state has put up in front of you. By not having to produce those reports, making that optional, that's money that you can save, and man hours that you can save at a local level that you would otherwise have had to spend, essentially generating a report that frankly is just meaningless, that very few people actually read at the state level, that generally just go into a file. So this is a way to help save some taxpayer dollars and some man hours for you as a local governing authority. There was another bill that I was pleased to help rewrite and then sponsor was a bill that dealt with our court systems. And this bill was House Bill 421, which was signed by the governor on Wednesday. That particular bill will probably wind up saving our judicial system and the taxpayers of Henry County indirectly approximately $2,000 for every trial that would be an incompetency to stand trial hearing. And it's a very technical aspect, but anyone that comes to the court and says, "I'm not competent to stand trial," or the attorney for that individual says, "I don't think my client is competent to stand trial," goes through a process that's mandated by state law to be a whole full jury hearing. So you have to impanel a jury, you have to bring citizens in, they lose a day there in, and it takes about, it's about a $2,000 cost to run through that hearing. And so what we've done is we've eliminated the need for a jury trial, and we've gone to a bench trial. So just the judge hears it. You don't have to impanel the jury. You don't have to involve the citizens and go through that tax pay. That expenditure of trying to bring folks in, pay them $25, I believe it is, the day for their service, as well as the time and need about the clerk's office to bring that jury in. These are small savings, but they're important savings because anywhere you can save a few dollars is important to your overall bottom line.
Well, I'm assuming with the budget crunch that we've all been under as government that you'll be continuing to review all the different agencies and departments of the state for those cost-saving measures. And as you said, with this one particular bill Senator Jeffries had introduced and really pushed through, will save a lot of time for our staff. And you're right, nobody reads those reports. But oftentimes, it's amazing, and I'm not going to name the agency, you're well aware of which department I'm talking about, we will submit a report, and within a couple of weeks, we'll get a letter saying, "You're late in submitting a report." And we've had to submit reports multiple times for the same thing. So it has really been frustrating for our staff, especially our finance director, who prides himself on being very meticulous about his reporting requirements, and it causes a rise in his blood pressure when those letters come in stating that those reports have not been received. And it's very difficult for these smaller jurisdictions that don't have the staff to put these reports together. So anything that you can do to downsize that department and get the tentacles out of local government, we would certainly appreciate that. It would be very beneficial to us.
Understood, Madam Chair. One final note, it just has to be underscored. I really appreciate your communication to me directly. I had a number of commissioners call me directly to ask me to help with important issues of varying degrees. I had commissioners call me to echo support about decisions that y'all have made, the resolutions that you've passed that wound up being the Bills 200, 201, 202. Those were important resolutions to have, and I want to say how appreciative I was to have those resolutions in hand. When Rufus came in and we had to present, I think it was Senate Bill 200 that dealt with the probate court, in presenting that in the Judiciary Committee, we were able to say that our board supported that unanimously, and that left no doubt in any member's mind in the committee as to whether or not to proceed. And what happened was a unanimous approval from the Judiciary Committee to move that bill to the Rules Committee and then out of Rules and onto the floor for a vote. Had that not been the case, had we not had your resolution, had this body not been resolved unanimously for that, that bill would have died. So it is because you all take the steps to be proactive and adopt those resolutions that gives me and Steve and the other representatives and the senators, gives us the backing to go in there and push for these things. We have the full force and effect of the local government behind us, and I want to commend you for doing that in advance and giving that to us and taking my calls. In fact, I called several members just to check on the legislation and make sure that I had a full understanding of what it was that you were presenting to us. And I want to thank you for taking my calls and talking with me through those items. It's very important that we have that communication in order for us to be successful, and I'm sure we're going to disagree over certain things, but if we can't also talk about the things we do agree about and move those things forward, then, you know, I don't think I'm doing the job that I should be doing for the citizens of Henry County. So I appreciate your time.
Mr. Holmes?
Andy, we just heard a presentation by Rufus Montgomery, and what I'm trying to understand is how do you guys work together, and what is the benefit of having a lobbyist representing Henry County?
Well, how we work together is that Rufus helps to, if I have a question and I can't get an answer on an item, y'all may, sometimes I've called, actually, and realized that everybody's phone's off, and then that's when I also realize that you're in session, you're actually meeting. So if I need an answer right then, Rufus typically has the answer, so he's able to go and say, and follow up with me to give me the answer that I need at that moment. And because we're a citizen legislature and we're only there for the 40 days, things happen extremely fast, especially in the last three to four weeks of the session, and there isn't a lot of time. I mean, literally, bills will pop up, and you have to make the decision. up, and you have to make the decision at that moment. If you have a question or a question is raised, unfortunately, you need the answer right then. So having someone that you can get the answer from at that time is important. So that, that's how, and we also work in that Rufus is there to, you know, to keep us informed of your decisions, make sure we have the resolutions in place, that we're aware of those things. And if there are other issues that come up with agencies, it's also helpful for him to be able to talk to us about those issues so that we can go and talk to our liaisons that represent those agencies and we can communicate with them. So it's helpful to have that line of communication. And it is, and I think it's important that you have, our jobs as representatives are to represent the people of our district. And I represent the folks in the 110th District, which means I represent southern, southwestern Newton County and most of Butts County. So, and then southeast Henry. My obligations are not just to Henry County. I have responsibilities to those other counties to work on legislation, which I did for Butts County, and on projects that I did for Newton County. So my time cannot be completely dedicated to all those items of Henry County. And unless those district lines change, that will be my responsibility going forward. So having someone there that can be focused on Henry County issues is helpful. But for me, I have to focus on three counties, which can, as you can imagine, is time-consuming and challenging.
Anyone else?
Thank you very much. We certainly appreciate all that you did this first session. You, I think you got a crash course in government.
I did.
And, but we appreciate all that you've done for Henry County and look forward to this next session.
It's my privilege. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to SPOST. The first item is a resolution requesting a ward of a bid to furnish and install various chain link fencing and gates at the former soccer complex. Our presenter is Ron Burkhalter of the Capital Projects, who is our Capital Projects Director, and that's going to be Exhibit Number Five. Good morning.
Chairman, Commissioners, good morning. Seal bids were solicited to furnish and install various chain link fencing, netting, and gates at the Henry County Admin Park or the old soccer complex in McDonough. The reason for the quotes or for the fencing is since the opening of North Mount Carmel, all the soccer in the county has moved out to the North Mount Carmel Soccer Complex. The existing fields across the street here, the fencing is needed to convert those soccer fields into four baseball fields. All the proposals that we received were over budget and a revised scope of work. Deleting all the netting was negotiated with the low, most responsive bidder in accordance with the county attorney, OCGA, and the Henry County purchasing guidelines. The revised scope of work includes 5,366 linear feet of 5, 6, 9, and 10-foot chain link fencing, 544 linear feet of 5-foot black vinyl coated, and 24 various-sized galvanized gates, and six black vinyl coated gates. Ten vendors submitted to bids. Staff recommends the revised negotiated bid of Zavari Enterprises, Inc. of Lawrenceville, Georgia, in the amount of $96,012. Funding for this is available in the SPOST Three Park Improvement Project account for District One. Any questions?
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? Mr. Bowman?
Did you give the others an opportunity to come back at it? Did I miss that?
No, we sat down with the low bidder. The way that, Commissioner, the way that we bid the project was a unit price. We, we took the netting. It was all on, we knew what the netting from each one of the bidders was worth because we, again, we bid the fencing by different sizes on a unit price basis. When we sat down with the low bidder, we took the netting and his unit prices out to get to the negotiated price.
Anyone else? If not, Mr. Holder, I believe this lies in your district, and I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve, Madam Chair.
Have a motion to approve, seconded by Mr. Bowman. All in favor. Motion carries five zero. The next item is a resolution requesting a ward of a bid to resurface six tennis courts at South Cedar Richard Craig Park and approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the City of McDonough. That's Exhibit Number Six.
Seal bids were solicited to furnish all material, labor, tools, and equipment and services required to resurface the six tennis courts, as previously mentioned, at South Cedar Richard Craig Park. There were three responsive bidders who submitted bids. The City of McDonough has committed to reimburse Henry County 35% of the total cost of this resurfacing. The intergovernmental agreement is attached to the resolution. Staff recommends the low, most responsive bid of MacGhart Industries Doing Businesses Talbert Tennis of Marietta in the amount of $122,083. Funding for this is available in the SPOST Three South Cedar Richard Craig Park Improvement Project account.
Does any board member have a question or comment? If not, Mr. Holder, I believe this lies in your district, and I will entertain a motion.
Move to approve, Madam Chair.
Have a motion to approve by Mr. Holder, seconded by Mr. Bowman. All in favor. Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to administration. The first item is request for approval of an agreement for the provision of guardian ad litem and child advocacy services. Our presenter is Suzanne Whitaker and Ann Miller, Exhibit Number One.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing us to be here today. We're here to renew our annual contract for the provision of child advocacy services, primarily in juvenile court, but also for Superior Court, in which children are involved in custody disputes between their parents. Of course, as you know, juvenile court, these are the children who have been abused or neglected by their families of origin and have either been placed in foster care or placed outside the home to protect their safety. This is the, I believe, fifth year that we've provided these services for Henry County. In addition, we are also available as other courts occasionally require us probate court every once in a while, magistrate court, or state court if there is a child witness that the court believes needs an attorney to represent them in those proceedings. It's my understanding that this amount has been budgeted in the amount of $125,000 from the juvenile court budget and $75,000 from the Superior Court budget for us to continue representing the children that we already represent and to represent the best interest of any children that come to the court's attention at a later time.
So your requested amount is $200,000 for this year?
Yes, ma'am.
Does any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this contract?
This is the same amount that you received last year, correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
No increase?
No increase. Anyone else? If not, you have a resolution before you to approve an agreement with Henry Guardian Advocates LLC for guardian ad litem services in the amount of $200,000 for fiscal year 2011, 2012, and I will entertain a motion. Motion by Mr. Holder, seconded by Mr. Holmes. All in favor. Motion carries five zero. Thank you. Thank you very much.
The next item on the agenda is a resolution requesting approval of an agreement with Norfolk Southern Railway Company regarding the Locust Grove Senior Center slash Conference Center. Our presenter is Clark Rayner, Director of Technology Services, Exhibit Number Two. Good morning.
Good morning. Just real quickly, the resolution is what it is. There are fees involved of $5,800, which are one-time occupancy fees that are charged by the railroad simply for crossing their right-of-way. It's basically a fee to use their right-of-way. And real quickly, basically what we've got is we've got fiber that's going to run fiber optic cable for telephone and internet service for the new conference center there in Locust Grove, which has still not been hooked up. We've actually got the fiber run all the way to the railroad track on both sides of the tracks, and we have two telephone poles that cross about 200 feet across the tracks there. And these are requirements that Norfolk Southern has given us. I don't think they're negotiable. We've, we've gone down that path. The railroad, I think I've heard it explained that we built our county around the railroad, so it is what it is. You have a resolution on your book, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have a question, probably more for Terry McMichael than anyone else. And Mr. Stany raised this question a couple of weeks ago. When we had a conversation about this same company, and the question had pertained, pertained to air rights over the railroad tracks, and he had asked the question if we had gotten any credit for closing Ivy Edwards Crossing when we built the new overpass on the McDonough Parkway Extension.
I think Rocky could probably give you an amount.
We did.
We did? Okay. Any board member have a question or comment pertaining to this item? Mr. Stany?
I've got a question. Rocky, the 58, is it 58 plus the 1,000?
It's the 5,800 is the one-time occupancy. The 1,000 dollars, I believe, is actually paid by the contractor itself, and that's-
So we're not paying that? That's basically insurance policy on the-
That's correct.
Okay. That's it.
Anyone else?
Just a comment. You're probably, you're right, there's no negotiating with the railroad, but I certainly want to make the public aware that the railroad has cost us $50,000 earlier this year for removing a sign within our right-of-way that was allowed to be put there. That cost us $50,000. In any time on any project along a railroad, the county has to pay dearly. And I'm going to quote from one of the most recent, and that is the Peaksville Crossing in Locust Grove. The railroad cost, charged us about a quarter of a million dollars, Rocky. It was 240 to 260 to relocate the crossarms on that area. And in talking to the attorneys for the railroad in the negotiation for the King Mill Road sign removal, I made the attorney aware that I know that Henry County means very little to the railroad because we talk about this county was built around the railroad. This country was built around the railroads. But Norfolk Southern owns a lot of property just between McDonough and Locust Grove that they're going to have to develop, and they're going to need some help with traffic and various other things. And I just wanted to make them aware of that. So, you know, that's just part of the game.
So everybody take notes, please.
Understood.
Mr. Stany?
Clark, was Mr. Bowman invited to this negotiation? Because I believe he's about the only commissioner on this board that's got any concessions from the railroad off of our railroad. Is that straight, Mr. Bowman?
Well, we did, but they turned around and got it all back by putting, by putting a flagman out there during the course of construction. So they got it all back and some. I think it was just working the numbers for what it was.
And we actually have to hire a flagman as well, but that's included in our, in our contract bid for the fiber.
Any other questions or comments? All right, if not, there's a resolution before you authorizing the agreement for right-of-way access between Norfolk Southern Railway and Henry County, and I'll entertain a motion. Motion to approve by Mr. Holder, seconded by Mr. Auletta. All in favor. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Moving on to planning and zoning services. This is a public hearing. Request approval of an ordinance to amend sections within Chapter 3-17 miscellaneous provisions and offenses, Article 2, adult entertainment establishment, Section 3-17-6 through 3-17-28. Our presenter is Michael Harris, Planning and Zoning Services Division Director, Exhibit Number Three. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman. Good morning, board members. Back in January of this year, the board enacted a moratorium on all provisions of our current adult entertainment ordinance for the purpose of going back and looking into making sure that our ordinance was consistent with all federal, state, local laws and provisions, as well as our Unified Land Development Code and our comprehensive plan. Staff has done that. We've gone back through and after reviewing a number of ordinances from other jurisdictions, we've come back with some recommendations on how to amend, recommendations to amend our current adult entertainment ordinance. Some of the major changes, probably one of the biggest changes, the requirement of locating these establishments within the M1 zoning district with having to meet all supplemental standards and also with the conditional use. And I'll talk about that a little bit with the, with the subsequent resolution. We've also expanded some of the definitions to be included within this ordinance, and we've added some additional requirements, most notably property owned by, what I like to do is kind of go through what our current requirements are right now so everyone listening can hear as well. The local and structural requirements include within 1,000 feet of any parcel of land which is either named or used for residential purposes. Again, these are the constraints. So no adult entertainment establishment may be located within 1,000 feet of any parcel of land which is either named or used for residential purposes, within 1,000 feet of any parcel of land upon which a church, school, governmental building, library, civic center, public park, or playground is located, within 1,000 feet of any parcel of land on which another establishment regulator defined herein is located, within 1,000 feet of any parcel of land upon which establishments on alcoholic beverages is located, on less than one acre of land, within 500 feet of any hotel or motel, and some of the additional ones that were picked up for this proposed ordinance is within 1,000 feet of any parcel of land owned by the Henry County Board of Commissioners or the Henry County Board of Education, within 1,000 feet of any approved activity center, as shown on the currently adopted future land use map, and within 1,000 feet of any state-licensed daycare facility. Those are some of the new, new requirements that were added. And we also modified our current fee structure to include additional, additional licensing fees for managers, adult entertainment establishment managers and entertainers. And again, we found that to be consistent with other jurisdictions that we, that we researched. And I also want to make, one of the key points, want to make sure I stress was that, you know, our current ordinance currently requires or restricts that no alcoholic beverages are allowed to be sold or served within these establishments, and that continues to be the case with this establishment as well. And also, any applicant applying for an adult entertainment establishment license has to go through a rigorous application process, hence the fees that are associated with it. So I want to make sure that point was made clear as well. In compiling these proposed amendments, you know, staff met with and consulted with all the cities to look at those areas that were going to be adjacent to the city jurisdictions and worked with them, looked at their ordinances as well, and make sure we had a, you know, we're all, they were agreeable what we were proposing, and we felt it was consistent with what they already have on their books as well. So want to make sure the board was aware that we have worked with and met with the other jurisdictions, adjacent jurisdictions. Going back, as I noted, the conditional use is going to be part of the proposed new process. I've had had a conversation with a development authority and they, you know, with the M1 designation, they had some concerns regarding relegating this into the M1 land use designations. You know, but, and we felt that, you know, with the conditional use process, this would kind of give, give an opportunity to vet out the process. So would have to go through that hearing process to determine whether or not the proposed location would be an acceptable location and also give an opportunity to mitigate or minimize any adverse impacts within those locations. So want to make sure you're aware that we have spoken with the development authority. I talked to Bob White, and we did have that conversation. But again, they did express some concerns about it being within the industrial areas. That's it. This is the initial resolution to address the Section 3-17. There's a subsequent resolution behind this one to actually make an amendment, text amendment to the ULDC as well. I'd be happy to address any questions myself. Ms. Dottie Green is also here from Business Licensing Department, who kind of serves the administrator for this, this code as well. She's here to answer any questions you may have.
I'll make a comment first, and I have one quick question. I'll turn it over to the board. And I want to explain why we're here today looking at this ordinance, and this all came about following the City of McDonough, I believe, adopting an updated adult entertainment ordinance. And unfortunately, the Supreme Court has stated that you must provide for these types of businesses, but we also have the ability to put reasonable restrictions on these types of businesses and how they will operate in our community. And this is an attempt to make sure that we are as tight and stringent as we possibly can be because I don't know what the others' thoughts are on the board. This is an undesirable type of business, and we certainly don't want it located here in Henry County. And I want to make sure that it's as very uncomfortable as it can possibly be to enticing them to come in here. On Number Six, you had within 500 feet of a hotel or motel. How did you come up with 500 feet where all the other restrictions are 1,000 feet? Why was 500 chosen for that?
This was carried over from our previous ordinance. That's one issue that we did not, did not make any amendments to or change.
Is there, is there any reason why we could not put the 1,000-foot requirement on that as well?
As a matter of consistency, sure, we can make that change.
And you said you had met with all the cities, and are they- And you said you had met with all the cities, and are they, the other goal on this was to also work with them to try to keep our ordinances as uniform as we possibly could so that we could narrow the areas in which an establishment like this could be located. Are the other cities also in agreement to what you are presenting here, or how are they handling their part of it?
They're in agreement with what we're proposing as our ordinance. Their ordinances are typically structured a bit different. You know, they, what they've done was they've typically gone through and identified and overlaid district to identify where those locations can be located. We've done it a different manner. We looked at the prospect of doing it that way, but we felt, you know, best suited for us in our jurisdiction to handle it by utilizing the constraints and identifying just within that M1 industrial area. You know, typically theirs is not tied to zoning per se, but they've gone through and they've identified a particular corridor or a particular area that would be allowable within their jurisdictions. But, you know, for those areas that are adjacent, that have been identified on the map as potential areas that lie adjacent to the cities, we have met with them to review those areas. You know, one of their principal concerns was the proximity of residential housing. I wanted to make sure that applied to not just within the cities, but within, that's just within the county, but within the city as well. So, if a location is proposed in the county, that's within that 1,000-foot area of a city residential area, then there'd be prohibitions be established, and the map reflects that. That buffer area includes any area 1,000 feet around any residential area or budding potential areas.
I know there had been some concern about a particular area that the City of McDonough had designated that lies in close proximity to the administration building and some very pricey land that Henry County has invested in for the future growth of county administrative services. Has any concession been made on that? Have y'all had any conversation with them to see if they could possibly consider locating that in another area away from the administrative building here?
We have asked, and that conversation was held, asked if they'd be agreeable to considering some additional modifications on their current ordinance, because you're right, right now some of their proposed locations would be within that, would fall within that 1,000 feet of land owned by the county. So, we've asked them to, we've asked them to go back and look at their ordinance, see if they'd be willing to consider adopting that as well, as of this date, they have not. And they noted that there was, you know, right now there's some opportunities for some buffering that could perhaps take place, but they have not made, we did make that request, and you know, as of this moment, they have not made any concessions or have not agreed to do that, but we certainly did have that conversation with them.
Mr. Stany? Um, sorry, Mr. Stany?
I just want to say to that point, I think that we've had very open communications with staff to staff.
Yes.
I think they're amenable to looking and recommending, but I think that may be a discussion that has to take place between elected officials.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Stany?
Michael, I had a conversation with someone last week. I guess they were aware we were reviewing this ordinance, but they had a concern that, you know, being the amount of strip centers that we have available, it's vacant at this point, and I do, I want to make sure they're aware that we did address that. Cannot be located, any strip center, mall, or any group structure, correct?
That's correct. Section 3-17-11B2 states that no adult entertainment establishment shall be located in any strip shopping center, mall, or other group structure, and any adult entertainment establishment must be placed on a separate building or its own lot. So, that specific issue has been addressed.
Okay.
Mr. Holmes?
Mike, we're only looking at the area shaded red, correct?
That's correct.
And I'm looking at this map, is there an opportunity for that particular area to expand, or are we just going to restrict just to those areas?
Right now, it should not expand, you know, again, unless there's areas, currently residential areas adjacent to industrial areas, and if that gets rezoned to something other than residential, or use goes away from residential, then that could expand the area, but I don't foresee that happening anytime in the near future.
Mr. Alletta?
The amount of red that's on here, is there a requirement that all the M1 has to be, or is this more than sufficient? Can this be repaired back so that it isn't all the areas shown? I mean, what are the requirements that this much red, if you would, on the map is being shown?
And our GIS department prepared the map, and again, we gave them the same constraints that I listed, asking them to show areas that are outside of that 1,000-foot bubble of churches, schools, activity centers, and they're also at least one acre in size. What you see shown on the map in the red is indicative of what meets that criteria. So, if we were, you know, we could, could we take provisions to scale it down even more? Perhaps.
Do we require to have so many miles, square feet, whatever is measured in, per miles in the county, or whatever, or square feet, or acreage, or whatever else?
No, sir, there's no such requirement. It's just being safe. The revised resolution was prepared. When you peeled back all of the criteria on these type structures, when you, it was like peeling back a banana, and when GIS peeled back all of those requirements, the resulting areas were M1 and M2 anyway.
That's right.
We did not have a specific designation for any M1 or M2 zoning. All of the conditions and restrictions and prohibitions that were in our ordinance necessarily resulted in that. So, I think staff made a decision to go ahead and designate M1 because that was the natural result anyway from our conditions, and this results in even a smaller number of parcels. The very first, under our previous ordinance, we had a huge number of parcels. So, what's before you is a condensed version of what it was, and we have significantly reduced. We had too many, I think, for our jurisdiction. There's no specific amount, but what was out there before was way too many parcels. So, this represents, I think, a reasonable, some reasonable restraints on where these type of facilities can locate.
I understand that, but I'm saying if the requirements that I understand is that we have to have places or areas for this type of business, I would think there's something that says there's a measurement. I mean, instead of having all of these M1s covered, I'm looking at specifically my district. Obviously, there's, the biggest red chunk is in my district, it appears, and the question is, why does all of that have to be covered and available?
I think also, and this may not answer your question, it just popped to mind, I think there's a restriction that you can't have more than one within proximity of each other. So, let's say if one locates in the heavily shaded area, you're not going to have four or five others able to locate within that same area, and...
What is that restriction? I mean, because obviously, the bigger the area, the more opportunity for more than one.
Yes, that's true.
Within 1,000 feet of any parcel of land on which another establishment regulator defined here under is located.
Well, that's greater, there's a bunch of thousand feet within that parcel in District 2. Are you telling me that there could be a whole bunch of them sitting in that, in that area, M1?
Within that entire area?
Yes.
Yeah, there's nothing right now that limits the number that can have. They're just constrained by the proximity to different locations. So, if they're beyond that 1,000-foot threshold...
I just have a problem with, if we don't have to offer this much available acreage, I don't understand why we're putting it all out there.
The issue is, when we say the Supreme Court requires us to have it, what the Supreme Court has said is that adult dance establishments are venues where freedom of expression exists, and we can't, and it's a First Amendment right for that dancer to express whatever he or she is attempting to express. And so, it's a constitutional requirement based upon First Amendment principles, and that's where we get into our, your abilities to regulate this constitutional right and the limits that you can, and if you think about any other constitutional right, you know that government cannot place unreasonable restraints on constitutional rights. So, you can place reasonable time, place a manner restrictions, and I think what staff has done, and what Michael has done, and Sharon Matthews has done, a wonderful job in giving some reasonable restraints. I think the more you try to confine and narrow down the exact locations and limit the number of parcels, you increase the opportunity for someone to say that you're being unreasonable in the exercise of those restraints.
Still, there's a bunch of red everywhere else to go. If that one parcel that I'm talking about, the large one, were removed, the question you're raising is to possibly be in question because we don't have more available, I would wonder if we couldn't say, there's other places to go, so why would we have to start with that many parcels available?
And I think the conditional use process probably will give you, in this board, the ability to narrowly focus on whether or not a particular establishment is appropriate for that location.
Within that area, that's correct. So, it does, like, as noted, it would have to go through a vetting process before the establishment.
But still, once it's placed on here as available to them, then your vetting process becomes a lot more complex. Your restrictions aren't there anymore. And like I said, if I look at this map, there sure is a whole bunch of red on there that this big chunk of property, if you would, in my district, doesn't seem to be necessary.
It was a lot redder in the before situation.
Yeah, it certainly was.
All I'm asking for is to make it even less redder.
I understand.
And certainly, your district has a bit more industrial than some of the other districts. I mean, so by proportion, certainly.
Let me also, just a couple of things. The definition of a minor is not achieve the age of 18, and then when you go to 317-9 and 317-10, it talks about minors, but then it says 21. Is that an inconsistency? I mean, I want it to be 21, but we define a minor as 21 as opposed to 18 for this ordinance.
And that's something we can, as a quick, we can look at, see if that's be, you know, would you be more consistent, make that change?
I would be concerned, Madam Attorney, I would be concerned that the definition of 18 and then everything else going through the rest of regulations calling it 21, even with headings of minors, starts calling it 21, that we've got an inconsistency, and we're going to be open for somebody saying that it's got to be changed back to 18. So, if the intent is 21, I would recommend we define minor as 21, if that's what we have the ability to do. And the last thing, just to make sure, one thing, and that is, and this came up in the January meeting, I recall, and it was tabled to get this put together, if nothing is passed, or if these revisions, if you would, are not passed, we're basically less stringent on where and what and everything else. Is that what I hear you saying?
That's correct, and this, these red areas, as County Attorney has mentioned, would be expanded if nothing is passed.
As well as the additional 1,000 feet and other things that have been added to the present ordinance.
That's correct.
Well, and I would also recommend to the board that whatever changes we can tweak today, we go ahead and do that before the moratorium is lifted, and we have a more stringent one in place, and then we can come back and we can look at some of the issues you raised about maybe increasing some distance between residential and things that might narrow down the red area even further.
Okay. Any other board member with a question or comment? Mr. Holder?
First question would be to Ms. Wiley. Is this ordinance in the form that it's in, being presented, is it legally defensible?
It is legally defensible. Commissioner Alletta made a good point about the definition of minors, and we need, that needs to get changed. But yes, it is legally defensible, and that map is legally defensible.
Okay, and the next thing that I'd like to bring to your attention, I know Districts 1 and 2, and of course, with the City of McDonough, it includes 3, or where 3 will end up being in a few months, a lot of red. But, think about this, and I think it was very wise in the way it was crafted, because you also put 1,000-foot restriction on any activity center. Well, the way our ULDC and also the new comp plan is shown is all by activity centers. So, if it's not existing today as an M1 zoning, there will be some M1 zonings in various activity nodes, or school nodes, or crossroad activity centers, or whatever. Am I correct?
That's correct.
But, the way this ordinance is written, it can't be within 1,000 feet of the activity center, so none of it can exist within that activity center. Am I reading this right?
That's correct, and to that point, there was an area down in Hampton near the airport and racetrack area that was industrial property, and we initially ran the map. It showed that area as in red, and we went back and overlaid the activity centers, that being a specially-used activity center, and eliminated that area. So, you're absolutely right. Any future activity centers that may emerge, they'd be constrained by that restriction.
And just because we see so much red, and I'm certainly not in favor of, I mean, in favor of getting the ordinance in place, because what we will end up adopting is certainly more legally defensible than what we have today. But just because we see the big blob of red on 155 and the one along Highway 42 and the Toys 'R Us and all of that area of the county, that doesn't mean that they're going there. That just means that's what exists as M1 zoning. But with the restrictions that you have put on with 1,000 feet between the resident, and another thing, that building has to be a standalone building with 40 feet of separation between buildings.
That's correct.
So, it's not something that somebody can just run out and put one in. Do we have buildings that meet the requirements? Certainly we do, and they could put one in, but it's not the big blob that we're looking at as far as, all of that area certainly would not qualify.
Mr. Alletta?
If you could move the map a little bit towards Hampton, please. There's a red area there, I believe that's Highway 3.
That's correct.
In your discussions with the City of Hampton, I know it's outside, was there any discussions about that with them?
They were made aware of it. They were shown. I think right now, their area, I believe it was 1941, again, as stated, theirs was principally, they identified corridors, overlay corridors where it'd be located. I think theirs was located more so along 1941 corridor. They took no exception to what we proposed.
Hello? Anyone else? Okay. Since this is a public hearing, at this time, I'm going to open this up to anyone who wishes to speak in regards to this ordinance amendment. If you would step to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Madam Chair, Bob White with the Henry County Development Authority. My business address and my home address.
You probably live here more than you are at home, so...
That's true. That's true. 140 Henry Parkway is my business address here. First of all, Michael and I had a chance to chat just for a few minutes. Until about 8:45 this morning, I had not seen the map that is referenced here in front of you, and we were generally vaguely aware of the discussions. We had not had a presentation to the Development Authority for input or feedback, and had not seen the map for this. And so, I recognize that there are parameters, all the things that Commissioner Holder just mentioned, but if you look at those red blobs, as he so correctly identified those, and Commissioner Alletta can attest to this, the area southwest along Highway 155 is the Liberty and Greenwood Industrial Parks, which is the core of our industrial development area. To my knowledge, Michael, y'all could correct me if I'm right, the landowners in the area have not been vetted or discussed with this about the millions of dollars, hundreds of millions of dollars that they've invested in this area. When you have adult entertainment with alcohol, and I recognize that alcohol, selling alcohol may not be tied into this, but you can bring alcohol into it. When you have adults drinking at areas in late into the evening, and they're in areas that are within or adjacent to our industrial parks that have, in many cases, operations throughout the day and night, where you've got 18-wheelers going in and out, and you've got people who may be impaired driving, you've got potential for, there's people being lost in industrial areas, enhanced opportunities for break-ins or other things that deal with commercial property. I would be very concerned if I were an industrial developer in those areas, or a business in the area having liability issues with things that move forward for that. If you move a crossover to the other side of the interstate, as Commissioner noted, that's the Toys 'R Us site, and while you're putting them into areas that potentially could be, and you've got the 1,000... and you've got the thousand-foot set-asides and whatever in those areas, if I'm a major investor in that area with large number of employees and other considerations, I would be very concerned about having those kinds of developments in my immediate area here. Again, I'm speaking as an individual. This has not been presented to our boards. Our board has not taken any formal action from the Development Authority perspective. But my concerns relative to this area and the area on forty-two is also area that Cousins Properties has developed down Highway forty-two, where Briggs and Stratton has their distribution center currently. So I think those concerns would be my concerns that I would have also. And I don't know, again, I literally saw the map at eight forty-five this morning, so I haven't had a chance to break it down. But we've got residential areas that are literally within adjacency with, within the Greenwood Industrial Park that are part of Eagles Brook in that area. And those are hundreds of feet from major, from industrial zone property, M1 zone property, not a thousand. So it's within that thousand-foot setback. But we have a lot of those areas. And just, again, I'm very concerned about the potential and what the potential would be for our industrial development in that very, very important and strategic corridor for us.
Jim, if I may, in Bob and I did, we spoke this morning, and I think Latony raised a good point that the previous, the current ordinance that's currently in place, when we went through and mapped those areas out, it in essence reflected a lot of those same M1 districts because it's restricted against residential. So what we have managed to do is further constrain and further restrict those areas. In essence, the red area that's shown now was expanded. So maybe to kind of go back through and constrict that a little bit more. And I think Commissioner Holder raises another good point regarding the activity centers. There's certainly some options may exist with the potential for new activity centers in the future to further reduce and restrict the size of these locations. And that's something we can certainly work with Development Authority on. And again, going back to the point regarding the conditional use process, I think that would certainly help to allow us to look at each individual potential location and see, you know, based on what industries are there currently exist, to make a determination if it's a good and right fit at the time.
May I ask a question? Are these not an activity center in the latest plan?
These locations that are shown are outside of an activity center.
Shouldn't be. My understanding of what an activity center is with jobs and intersections and the other types, things like that.
Mr. Bowman?
You know, and I understand, I mean, there's an awful lot of it right down there, right in the middle of our industrial parks, which is not good. And if you scroll back up to Eagles Land and Parkway, it's right across the street from Carter's. It's, we have a number of commercial properties and distribution properties there that wants that Parkway's a hundred percent complete. That, you know, we're looking for more commercial development in there. And that's, every one of us is, we're going to have an issue with where it is, obviously. But it seems that, and I'm only going with just the meeting with Carter, I think if that had have been in play, Carter would have went ahead and moved, you know, when we were trying to make some concessions and keep them here. As for me, I'm never going to vote for that type of establishment because I don't believe there's anybody in my district that wants one. And I understand, Madam Attorney, that we've got issues with the Supreme Court, but they've lost, actually, they've lost contact with the real citizens and public, you know. So I, it's a slippery slope when you start talking about constitutional issues. But sometimes having something rammed down the citizen's throat that really don't want it there, you know, that's another issue for another time. But I would never vote for it anyway because I represent the citizens in my district and I don't believe any of them would want it. But it does seem, I mean, I know we're putting it in the M1 districts, but I mean, especially down there in District Two and District One, I mean, that's areas slated for growth, you know, for more industrial growth. And I can only see that as, you know, as something that's very adverse to any business owner wanting to come in there and put a business in there, be it distribution, be it any type of technical services, be it, you know, it just, it's completely against what most businesses would want in their area. And I, it's, I know you guys, that's a hard job for you guys. I'm not saying anything about where it's at because you don't have a lot of choices in where you can put it. And all of us are not going to be, none of us are going to be happy with them in our districts and the people that we represent. But I don't know the answer to it, Madam Chair. I really don't.
Miss, I'm sorry, Ms. Wiley had, I think, had a comment. You had a comment, Ms. Wiley?
Yes, ma'am. I wanted to say that the focus and goal today should be on placing reasonable constraints on them, not to prohibit them, because that certainly is not what we are charged and you are charged to do. Even though we may personally have viewpoints towards that, our constitutional obligations that we all have to uphold and offend requires us to only to place the reasonable restraints based upon your public health, safety, welfare considerations. And if you use that as your guiding focus today, I think you'll make the right decision. But I wanted to make the record clear that we're not trying to restrict these. I mean, these type of establishments always suffer from the NIMBY syndrome, but not in my backyard and fall in line, I think, with, you know, landfills and other things that people don't want near them, but have a right to operate. And I'm certainly not advocating for or against, but, you know, I do advocate for following the mandates of the Constitution and the Supreme Court United States rulings, even when I disagree with those rulings. So I just wanted to make that clarification.
And I also think, too, for to clarify, it sounds like, Bob, you may not have heard that alcohol cannot be served in these establishments. It sounds like you were talking about the opposite.
Does that mean that alcohol cannot be consumed on the premises of people bringing in?
That's correct.
That warning probably needs to be very clear. That was a point I was going to make because it says, "No adult entertainment establishment shall be permitted to serve or sell alcoholic beverages." And we should also include a provision that nor shall it be allowed on the premises.
But again, I'm not being conversant with the full scope of what's anticipated and what's permissible and not permissible. I can't envision an adult entertainment type of thing where there would not be alcoholic beverages somewhere around in the real world is when you have eighteen-wheelers and passenger vehicles in close proximity to alcohol and late-night activities. It increases the opportunity for a lot of problems.
The other restriction I noted in there is that they, their hours of operation, they have to close at midnight. Is that correct?
That's correct. Hours between eight AM and twelve midnight, Monday through Saturday.
Wait, when you, this is a question for Latony. If you limit and say no alcoholic beverages, does that not allow younger people in the establishment? Like eighteen years old? So you can have your eighteen-year-olds who are just fixing to get out of high school or just out of high school, and now they're up at the local, whatever club you call it? When you, when you cut that alcohol sales out, then you've lost your restriction on age of what can go in there. That's my understanding, man.
Well, I think you raised a good point, which is probably why that twenty-one years old was in there. The city of Atlanta had, there's a case undecided with the Georgia Supreme Court where the city of Atlanta, apparently, they can serve alcohol in those establishments in Atlanta. And the city of Atlanta enacted an ordinance that said you had to be twenty-one years old to enter those premises and alcohol was served there. Well, there were eighteen-year-old dancers who wanted to dance in there and the court said that that ordinance was unconstitutional because the eighteen-year-old dancers could come in, because it restricted their ability to come in to work even if they weren't consuming. So there has been litigation over that issue when it pertains to alcohol.
Mr. Alletta, you had a comment?
Going back to the Liberty and Greenwood red blob, if you would, is it necessary to put both of those in there? Again, back to my question of having to have all of it. Why can't it just be one of the two?
Right. And we didn't put anything in. We just highlighted those areas that were outside of the, outside the constraints that were.
The activity centers, the ones that would meet the thousand-foot requirement, the buffering, the zoning. It was, it's what ended up after they applied the criteria.
And that's what's in there now and more. I mean, the area right now is currently much larger.
One thing is misleading about this map, correct me if I'm wrong. All of the green that you see or the yellow where the cities are, just like right out here on Industrial Boulevard, City of McDonough has designated a portion of that as the location. So we're not seeing any of the zonings that the cities have that would qualify. So we're only seeing what's in the unincorporated area. So when you see what the cities put in there, it's going to be a lot more red than we see it right now.
Yep. The other thing is, what's the magic of one thousand feet as opposed to fifteen hundred feet or two thousand feet? I mean, reasonable or unreasonable? What, why the magic of one thousand versus a higher number?
And I'll say, you know, we, again, we looked at some other jurisdictions and just felt that one thousand feet was proximity far enough away that, I don't know there's a magic number per se. We wanted to make it.
What if we did say two thousand?
It goes back to the reasonableness. I think there are two ways, I think, well, I hear you saying, Commissioner Alletta, for instance, the city of McDonough and I believe the city of Hampton, they have identified specific areas and said this is where these type of facilities can locate. And the county has not done that. Obviously, we have a wider geographical boundary than cities. However, that is one option that could be undertaken. If the board wants staff to take it back and designate specific areas and take on all of these other, most of these criteria which expands the appropriate areas, then that's something we can do. It obviously will require an extension of the moratorium in order for staff to do that.
That's right.
I just, I just don't see the need to have that area as large as it is if there isn't a proper designated line, if you would, which is two separate areas of commercial development there. And again, the two thousand. The other is that, it sounds ridiculous to say this, but Bob mentioned Eagles Brook. The houses are not within a thousand feet, but the golf course is. People are going to probably laugh about restricting within a thousand feet of a golf course or something like that. Is that something that could be added as well?
You do have that pocket right across the street from the, where LG Electronics and before you get to the Home Depot Distribution Center, it's a subdivision.
Yes.
In that area. And that is surrounded by the industrial on all sides.
And again, condition one of Section seventeen, three dash seventeen dash eleven, within one thousand feet of any parcel of land which is either named or used for residential uses or purposes. And again, I'm not, I believe most golf courses are zoned RA, Sherry. Is that typically the case? So if that's the case, then there would be that inherent buffer around the golf course area as well. And we can go back and double-check the map to make sure that's reflected, but I'm fairly certain I have Pat to pick that up.
If that golf course is within a residential development, then it would be zoned, the residential development. So it would be covered.
That's correct. That's correct. And again, typically a golf course would be designated under RA or some type of residential designation.
Yeah, I would think it would be part of the residential element.
Mr. Holder, did you have another comment?
Just a comment. I know the comps that you used according to the text is Austin, Texas, Amarillo, Texas, Beaumont, Texas, Indianapolis, Los Angeles, St. Paul. But as far as local people or local to Georgia, what other comps do you have as far as getting comparisons?
And we did look at, I know the city of Roswell, we looked at. Theirs was, pulled some elements from there. We looked at, again, all the cities and theirs, how they format theirs is a little bit different in using the overlay corridor. But beyond that, it was, it was broad. I mean, we went throughout, throughout the country. I know Roswell is one that kind of stands out as we looked at.
As an example, let's say Griffin, Georgia, or Coeida County, or Newton County, or Cony, Rockdale County. Do you have any comps from any of them? Because I know, you know, they're faced with the same thing. We are along an interstate highway. Those are things that I just wonder.
Right. And again, Roswell is the one, the most local one that I know, that I know we looked at and investigated.
See, Roswell's a little bit different because you really don't have that interstate running through it like we do here in this county. But even further to the south, even on Macon, you have to get like a Coeida County, Douglasville, or some of those. What about there?
We have a couple of choices today. We can, we can adopt the recommended changes to this ordinance and then ask the staff to go back and tweak it a little bit more, or we can vote to extend the moratorium an additional sixty days and table both of these items to a later date. And that will give each commissioner an opportunity to sit down with staff. It'll give staff an opportunity to do more research on this to make sure, at the end of the day, that we have it as tight as we can and would still be in compliance with constitutional requirements.
One thing, Michael, when you bring this back, this map back to us, I think it would be helpful for everybody up here. If we went ahead and colored in the areas that the cities have incorporated, that way would help make us, make a better decision instead of loading up a one area and then when you overlay the city map, you're going to have a whole bunch. I'd like to see.
Even if it's a different color, just designate, you know, that is the same.
Okay. And just real quick, Commissioner, if I may, Sherry reminded me that we did look at Rockdale and Cherokee and some of the other more adjacent jurisdictions. And what they currently do is allow it outright within their M1, light industrial areas.
Well, and I think, too, when you look at Henry County, you know, the morals may be slightly different based on other areas. We're a lot more conservative community, so we don't necessarily have to adopt everything another community has. We need to tailor it for what's in the best interest of our community and our constituents. With that being said, I will look to the board for either a motion to adopt this and come back with, and tighten it up later or for, to extend the moratorium an additional sixty days in tabling the two items related to that today.
Move to extend the moratorium.
Okay. And have a second by Mr. Bowman. All in favor? Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is an appointment to the McIntosh Trail Community Service Board. I received a letter from Miss Susan Craig, who chairs that board. And Mr. Gosnell, Robert Gosnell, has served on that board since nineteen ninety-four. And he is here today, and I'm assuming that you're here because you would like to continue serving in that capacity?
Yes.
All right. If, if, if the board would, I have, would like a motion to approve him to continue his service on McIntosh Trail. Motion by Mr. Bowman, second by Mr. Holmes. All in favor? Motion carries four zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to make sure you tabled both items.
Yes, we did both items. All right, we're moving into our public comment section of the agenda where citizens are allowed to voice county-related concerns, opinions, et cetera, that are not listed on the agenda during this portion of the meeting. All persons wishing to speak for public comment must sign in with a county clerk prior to the beginning of the meeting. We've had two sign up for public comment. And the first one is Stacy Richardson of nine forty Daily Mill Road of McDonough. And she is here to speak on the wrecker service. All right, we will go to the next one. Steve Richardson of two zero seven Wind Drive in Hampton is here to speak about the wrecker service ordinance. Good morning. You have five minutes.
I'm just going to give it to the county attorney. I'm good for today.
Okay, thank you. And what about Ms. Richardson? Is she going to, okay, thank you. Mr. County Manager, anything for public comment? He's gone. This county attorney is gone. Okay, the meeting's not over. I understand it's been a little lengthy here. All right. We, I'm going to wait on her to come back. I'm going to go and announce the upcoming meetings in a. I'm going to go and announce the upcoming meetings in advance, and we'll back up to the county attorney item. Tomorrow, May seventeenth, at six thirty PM, we have a regular board meeting. Friday, May twenty-seventh, all county offices will be closed for a furlough day, and Monday, May thirtieth, all county offices will be closed in observance of Memorial Day. Monday, June the sixth, at nine AM, we have a regular workshop meeting, and Tuesday, June the seventh, at nine AM, we have a regular meeting. And at this time, we will back up to the county attorney comments, which is a resolution amending the delegation of authority to the Henry County Tax Commissioner. And I believe this was emailed to everyone in advance of the meeting.
I'm not really sure if I, I don't know.
Exhibit number, it's also exhibit number eight in your book.
And I apologize, I was stepped outside to speak to represent to boil to bond issue. This resolution is an amendment from a previous resolution that you all have adopted. Under Georgia law, the Board of Commissioners has the ability and the authority to waive penalties and taxes that are assessed on unpaid after lorm taxes where such failure to pay is not based upon gross or willful neglect. And you can make that case, or make that determination on a case-by-case basis. The law also allows you to delegate that authority to the tax commissioner, and you all did that a couple of years ago. You amended, you delegated that authority to the tax commissioner, the newly elected tax commissioner, David Curry. What we have determined in looking at the operation of that ordinance, or that resolution that granted that authority, is that it contains certain requirements that are either not necessary or onerous. The conditions that, two of the conditions that you imposed, the commissioner has asked that those be removed, and those two commissioners, those two changes are, one, that the commissioner has to certify in writing and under oath that the waiver of the assessed penalties and interest was not the result of gross or willful neglect. And we felt that that was unnecessary, because the statute already requires that, and as a constitutional elected officer, the tax commissioner is bound to apply Georgia law in the same way that you would if you were administering this particular statutory provision. So it's unnecessary. He's an elected official, he has to abide by Georgia law, and that's inheriting the statute and his duties as a constitutional officer. The second requirement that was imposed upon the tax commissioner was that he submit an annual report to this board listing all of the assessments and/or penalty waivers that he made. Well, that's an unnecessary requirement, because anyone can get that information through public records requests, and he has, I know, responded to such requests over the course of the past year. So in order to make his operations of his office more efficient, to alleviate unnecessary and onerous requirements, we're asking you today to re-delegate that authority, removing those two requirements, and delegating to the tax commissioner the authority to make the final determinations regarding the waiver of assessed penalties and interests as provided by Georgia law and in accordance with the constraints required by Georgia law.
And if this is approved today, if a new tax commissioner is elected in the future, then this would have to be adopted again, is that correct?
Not necessarily. It doesn't specify an individual's name, so if you want to say to David Curry or to the current tax commissioner, we can amend the resolution to say that. This delegation is giving it to that office, so the office holder changing would not affect that delegation.
And this can be rescinded at any time?
Yes, ma'am, you all can rescind it at any time.
Does the board have any questions or comments, Mr. Oletta?
So I understand, at the present time, there's a requirement of the tax commissioner to report to the board annually, and this is to ask that that be removed?
Yes.
I don't understand what the problem is in presenting a report to the board. I understand it's there and people can ask, but what is the issue that says there's a problem with having that come before the board to make that presentation?
I don't think it's necessarily a problem, but I believe that the intent of the original resolution was to make it where those changes or those amendments were publicly known. And so the fact that public record requirements already make that information publicly available, it's just an unnecessary requirement to come back here. I'm sure the tax commissioner, if you all asked him to, he would come up here and give you those reports if he wanted, if you all asked him to at any time. However, it just wasn't a necessary item to be in the resolution. So there is no specific problem.
I understand he would do it, and on the other hand, it is a forum in which the public, the citizens themselves, would see an annual report as opposed to requesting it, it's, they know it's coming. I would also think that the tax commissioner would probably welcome being able to do that to, again, validate what he's done for the citizens as well, so it's, I would think in his best interest as well to have it. The last report drew a lot of comments after it was submitted, which tells me that the people were not aware, and a few people that did find out by open records then started talking about it. So I think to stop that report from coming, now that it's been put out the first time, would open itself for questions as to why we wouldn't want an annual report continuing to come forward before the board. That's my feelings, I agree.
Any other questions or comments? All right, you have before you a resolution, and I will entertain a motion on that. All right, we have a motion to approve by Mr. Holder, is there a second? I'm going to call for a second one other time, is there a second to his motion? All right, motion dies for lack of a second. Is there an alternate motion that someone wishes to enter? All right, well, I guess this is a non-action item.
Thank you, thank you, Madam Chairman, thank you, all in favor.
All right, at this time, we need a motion to convene into executive session for the purposes of potential pending litigation personnel and land acquisition matters. Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Oletta, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. I need a motion for approval of an affidavit and resolution pertaining to executive session. Motion by Mr. Stamey, second by Mr. Holmes, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. At this time, I need a motion from Mr. Holmes and approval of agenda item.
Madam Chair, I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda to authorize the approval of resolution, of a resolution to authorize the acquisition of point zero three one acres of right-of-way, more or less point zero seven eight acres of permanent easement, more or less, in the land lot one eighty-nine of the eleventh district of Henry County, Georgia, by negotiated contract or condemnation pursuant to the provision of O dot C dot G A, section thirty-two dot three dash three dash four through section thirty-two dash three dash nineteen.
We have a motion, and I need a second. Second by Mr. Stamey, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. And I think, do we need to amend the agenda and add an additional item to that?
Yes, Madam Chair, I would like to authorize approval of a resolution, of a resolution to authorize the acquisition of zero dot twenty-four acres of right-of-way, more or less, zero dot, zero, zero, zero dot zero seven acres of permanent easement, four or less, and zero dot zero one acres of driveway easement, more or less, in land lot one eighty-nine of the eleventh district, Henry County, Georgia, by negotiated contract or condemnation pursuant to the provision of O dot C dot G dot A, section thirty-two dash three dash four through section thirty-two dash three dash nineteen.
Okay, we have a motion for an approval, is there a second? Second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor? Motion carries five zero. If there's no further business to come before the board, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mr. Holder, second by Mr. Bowman, all in favor? Motion carries five zero, we stand adjourned.